Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. Welcome. At our budget workshop hearing, and I just want to do a check. We have Councilmember Willis and Councilmember Davis with us tonight, and I believe we have Mayor Pro Tim Kellum virtually with us.
Yes, hello.
Hey, Mayor Pro Tim. Good to hear that's working. And how about you, Councilmember Raymond? Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. And is she from Germany? Is that where she's?
Yes, sir. Live from Germany.
Wow, well.
It's five or six hours later, so it's about midnight there, 11 o'clock.
Well, Guten Tag from beautiful Cape Canaveral, Florida. Or Guten Nisch. Well, thank you so much for all being here today, everyone in the audience. This is our budget. This is one of a few that we do every single year as we prepare. This is a time for us to kind of go in and under, first of all, understand the budget. Each one of us has met individually at some capacity with our city administration, has worked hard to prepare the budget, what they believe is the priorities for this year. So we're certainly facing some challenges, but staff has, I think, got us up to speed, and at this time, we can get right into it. So I'll go over to our city manager if you want to give us a brief overview or?
Thank you.
Call to order. Uh, I think Councilmember Raymond or Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, make sure to mute your microphone. If you're dialed in, we're getting some background noise.
Angela? You muted.
There we go. Thank you very much. Todd?
We need to call the meeting to order.
Okay, excuse me. I call this meeting to order, and this time we're going to do our pledge allegiance. Councilmember Willis, would you please leave it? Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. With the republic, with its strength, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Raymond?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Present.
All right, everyone's here. This time, this is the public participation portion of our meeting. Sorry, I was a little bit out of order there. There was a chance I would be dialed in today, so I'm coming in a bit hot, but I'm thinking for setting me straight. If you have any general public comments on the meeting, we don't really have a lot of specific agenda items, but this is the time that we'll open it up for those of you who want to comment on the budget. So I don't have any cards up here. I'll check with our deputy city clerk. Daniel, do you have any hands raised? Seeing none, okay, and just to make sure that no one handed in a card, please raise your hand if you did intend to speak, and I don't see it. Okay, seeing no hands, public participation is closed. And now, Todd, would you please take us away? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very pleased to present the fiscal year 2223 budget. I had the pleasure of meeting with each council member individually with John DeLeo and Jenny Coldiron. And we went through in detail any questions, but also a overview. And that overview is best summarized in this bullet points that you were given earlier that we we're going to send, spend most of this hour talking about those bullet points. The challenge for this year's budget has been inflation and how we want to deal with the inflationary pressures when it comes to wages for our staff. And you'll hear John and Jenny and me talk a lot about those pressures. The prior to us realizing the full impact of inflation, we all, we're already aware of the $15 minimum wage requirement that the city had to comply with. So we're, we've balanced that in this as well. So all that's to say is this budget is very heavy on making sure we're taking care of our employees, retaining our employees. It's a very competitive market. We've seen some increase and uptick in employees who've actually left for higher wages. We need to remain competitive. So what we propose, and this is just a general overview, what we propose is a tiered approach. The, the, across the spectrum of wage earners in the city, there's a lower tier, a second and a third and a fourth tier here. It was from lowest paid to the highest paid, and those tiers, we're addressing them individually. The lowest tier gets a 10%. Next tier, 8%, then 6%, and then 4%. So it's kind of rising the bottom end up faster than the top end, if that makes sense in pay scale. That's mostly due to the effects of compression and pay compression, which Melinda's here, and she can explain that. It's a phenomenon that's happened in COVID, post-COVID, also because of the inflationary pressures. The average US household is paying some $6,000 or more in a year in just gas and groceries. So that, that affects everybody across the board. So what we're doing to compensate for that is we're proposing a $2 an hour increase across the board for all employees. So you have the compression-based tier effect. Then you've got a $2 an hour across the board increase. And that's what we're proposing here in this budget, and I'll let John and Jenny talk about that in just a minute. Continuing the overview, city council strategic planning retreat is always a focus for our budget. We speak with our budget when we talk about our projects, what we mean to do. So the strategic planning retreat had a number of items, but they were less capital-intensive items this year. We're going to, you, for instance, with the Presidential Streets Master Plan, we know that's a goal. We've got the Civic Hub. We're going to continue with the master planning for that. We've got a proposal for the concession stand at Canaveral City Park. Putting money away for A1A, those are the things that council said they wanted at the retreat. Those are all funded in this as well. But I want to think about the projects that are ongoing, those things that are already funded, for instance, the Cape Center and the finishing up the community center. Those are cash-forward items that are already funded items. This is an operating budget here. The operating budget is mostly going to be your wages and what it takes to operate. So John worked very closely with Jenny to get every department to pull out some $540,000 in operating normal expenditures, reduce those, to get this millage rate to a point where we can hit the, the wages that we want to hit, the minimal capital projects that we're proposing, and still do that with the least amount of impact to our residents in the tax structure. So the proposed budget is based on a millage rate, which is at 3.5596. Last year, or this current fiscal year, the milit rate is 3.5755. So it's a, it's a lesser rate. The milit rate is less. But when you consider the fact that the properties in the city Cape Canaveral, like all of the state of Florida and the nation, have increased in value, applying that rate to that higher value brings more revenue to the city in tax dollars. So to accepting that revenue is accepting a tax increase. So that's why even though the rate is lower, the revenues are going to be higher than last year, so it's technically called a tax increase, even though the rate is lower. Little confusing to think of that way. But it's technically a rate increase. This rate increase does not require unanimous vote of the council. If it was 10% or more, it would require unanimous, but this rate increase does require a four to one minimum to get. So with John, with that, John, I'll let you take over and go over some additional details.
Thank you. Thanks, Council. City Manager. The one thing I make everybody aware of, like the city manager said, is council, we talked with council, each council member at least an hour, and provided them with a budget impacts as they would occur based on the decisions made. So if they went with a 3.5596 millage rate, we told them exactly what the impact would be on the general fund. If they decided to go down the rollback, we told them what the impacts would be there, and if they were to go mid-range, what the impacts would be there. And, and each decision, the decision of the 3.5596, the staff worked so hard on this, especially my deputy finance director, is that what we did to, we tried to do everything without an excessive tax hike, so it would take care of the employees, not be a super impact to the residents, and still satisfy what was needed in the general fund. But what we did in the general fund, we had to impact the general fund just to make this number. So by bringing down this tax rate, we had to do things that we don't normally do. For instance, our contingency is below $400,000. We dropped that down to 230. Our renewal and replacement account, which is critical to the way we do things, went from 240,000 down to 124,000. And we also had to go to the point where we're thinking about the employees and the things we want to get done in the general fund. We even deleted a prospective new IT position in in 2223. We deleted that. We went to the directors, and we had them delete various things, like the Public Works Director deleted various items throughout his operational expenditures for, for $100,000 throughout, on things we can do without this year. And then also, then I went in and made the decision that some of our IT needs could be pushed out to October 1st, 2023. So I took $50,000 out of that. So we reduced to make, just to be able to make this number, we reduced the budget, the decreased the cost in the general fund by $523,000. So that leaves us where we are, we're at now. Again, like I said at the beginning of what I was saying, now with council, for any decision the council makes below the 3.5596, it will cut in to the general fund. And the general fund will have a trickle effect to the CRA. And if the CRA loses too much money, like 100K, 150K, whatever, we'll have to go into the CRA, and we will have to cut a program in the CR. Some, something's got to give someplace. And, and that's, that's basically would be at a trickle effect. Now, on, on the good side, is based on what happened in the strategic retreat and stormwater and wastewater. Council, everything council asked for is in this budget, is in enterprise funds. The general fund is the one that was most challenging, and the general fund is the one where we are definitely looking out for, for the employees, yes, because inflation and the cost of living, you know, they say inflation's 9.1%. And I say, based on what I've heard, it's more like between 12 and 14%. And everybody, the average family spending $500 more a month. And we have 22 employees that actually work for the city that live in the city of Cape Canaveral, which is really outstanding and amazing, because that's what, 33% of our employees. And that probably isn't happening, especially in small cities, because the expertise doesn't just have to be in the same city. So we're very fortunate there. And it's, and I will just say this, as council looks to pass a millage rate that supports the, supports our employees, those employees are not only residents who may be, may be based on the value of the home they have, and if that house, they bought a house, is impacted by taxes, but on the other end of it, there are employees who work for the city who are dealing with now the most toughest times of inflation and the cost of living. So council, by passing this 3.5596, is not only sending a message to the residents that based on what staff did, we're keeping the tax rate down, but we're also taking care of our employees. And as the finance director and as an employee of this city, the quality of people that work for this city, we do not want that diminish. We've lost 10 people in the last year, five managerial, five non-managerial. And that expertise is not made up in, within two months or three months. So it's so very important. This may be, since I've been here 10 years, this is probably the hardest we've had to work on a budget to, to make the numbers and get where we have to be almost trying to satisfy all parties, and I think we've done it. And so I leave it in the hands of council. I think we've had some really good discussions, and we've loaded you with the information I think you need to help, to help run this budget workshop, and then once we get in the council, the council meeting to approve, to approve this 3.5596. But those decisions are yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all the for explaining that. And this year, we got a kind of holding it, just a simple two-page document that kind of guided the conversation, I think our city manager and finance director just went over, but it's very helpful because, you know, when you look at last year's budget, and you get this year's budget, it's a lot of numbers. You can kind of see how the bottom line might change, but it's really difficult to see where you had to pull from. So, thank you. I hope this continues because it really answers a lot of questions.
Thanks, Mayor. And if I just may add that we haven't raised taxes in this city since 2017, and since 2018, we pretty much always went with rollback. You take the collective actions of going from 2018 forward at rollback every year, and then compound it with COVID, cost of living and inflation, and this is the challenge. This is why we're at this moment. Some cities did tackle higher salaries, like Melinda has done for our city in terms of compression or pay raises. This city, we haven't done that. So the time, even without inflation or what have you, the timing is right for us to get competitive with the other cities, and I just want to let you know. So we haven't done, we've done rollback since 2018. So that's pretty remarkable, and we're still the third or fourth lowest in the county. So and we've taken care of our citizens, and you could look around the city, and we've done some really good things.
And I'm going to pass it up to council here in a sec, but I know we're talking a lot about a millage rate because it drives the entire revenue side of this budget. It's really important. We will have a public hearing to vote on that coming up at our regular council meeting at 6:00. But today, the conversation around the millage rate is important. The goal is to become familiar with the budget and try to work through any things amongst the council that we want to see change or improve, and we will have another one of these coming up here soon. And then two public hearings to pass the budget. So this is the first of a few. But with that, council, I guess I can start here. Councilmember Willis, do you have any comments? We can just kind of go around.
Well, I'm, I'm particularly concerned about the depletion of staff. I think the 10 employees, my calculations, they averaged three years, four months on the job for us. And that's going to be difficult to replace that experience on average. As far as the, the budget, I really don't have any outstanding questions on it. It was summarized very well for me. I know we've probably reached a point where we're going to have to do something that hasn't been addressed in the most recent past.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I share on the concern with Councilmember Willis. I'm concerned about the staff. I think the staff does a phenomenal job, and I'm in total support of the staff. I'm concerned that we are losing people and replacing them. So I don't really have any questions about the budget. I understand why we're here and how we got here. So I intend to completely support this 100% for the staff.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My voice is a little shaky, but I'll try to be clear. You know, I, I agree with, with Councilmember Willis and, and Davis about how important this is to the employees. We have to take care of them. I'm wondering, though, you know, we talked about employees leaving to, to make more money. Are they going to bigger cities with bigger budgets or county positions that have way more money than we have? I mean, we, I, we absolutely don't want to lose our good employees. But there is a, you know, a reason they're going to places for more money because there's more money there to start with. And my other thing right for right now is, you know, we definitely need to give the employees a raise, absolutely. They, they all work very hard and are dedicated to our city. But on the one hand, it's ironic that we're going to give them raises, and then, you know, with inflation and everything going up, we give them a raise, and then on the other hand, we take it away. So, you know, it's a balance right now of what's happening in the world, and I, I agree that they need a raise. I just don't, you know, going through the budget and, and the and the projects that we have and, and the things that we've put in here for funding. You know, is there a way we could adjust some of the things to save a little bit of money on the projects? So we're not in this dire strait. And then, you know, I was looking through budget workshops, and, and then I came across something that was interesting, and in 2016, the, the and was David Green, and he stated that the capital projects are funded by grants. And we have the lowest tax rate with no long-term debt. And right now, we have long-term debt, and I don't know if we have gone down on grant funding for a lot of these projects. Are we getting as many grants as we used to to help with the budget? That's just my questions. You know, I can, like I said, I fully support our employees. You know, the guys on the streets, guys and girls out there working hard in the heat, and they're dedicated, and they're always happy when I talk to them. So we need to take care of them. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And I got a couple of your questions, and we can hold those and come back to them. But if you're finished, we can go to Councilmember Raymond.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Is she on your phone? Councilmember Raymond, if you can hear us, go ahead. Does she have the ability to message? I want to know if she's talking.
Angela, are you able to hear us? Are you muted?
Muted.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, we hear you now.
Thank you. I think this is a fine budget. As I said, I went through it fine sheet com, page by page, item by item. And I think that my job, and I'm very much in ways that we could possibly cut certain projects or certain due, but I don't think that there is anywhere. And I'm very much in favor of the plan that has been proposed, I think is a good one. So I'm very much in favor of this budget, and we're one of the lowest tax rates in the year. So we know that things are being done the right way. And I believe that this is a good budget for us right now. And there's not too much we can do with gas prices up, and it's all over the world. Here in Germany, they're paying between eight and nine dollars for a gallon of gas. So, as I said, I think it's a fine budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we heard everything loud and clear. It sounds like you're fine with the budget. You looked at ways to cut. Couldn't find any that you thought were worth it, but overall, you're in favor of the budget. Is that correct?
Right.
Great, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so got everyone's opening comments. Mine are similar on the, on the employees. I, I fully support what we need to do there. My question, and then we can go back through if there are any more questions, and I, and I guess I can kick it off, is the, the increase from, I guess I don't know exactly what we call the lineup, but employees' wages, right, or whatever goes out every year to compensate our, in our operating budget, the salaries of employees, that total number last year that we expensed. Do we know what that is roughly for wages? I'm just trying to figure out how much we're increasing in total dollars for payroll.
Yes, I mean, we could, we could look that up relatively quickly. It probably, I think the impact is about $375,000. I think it knows that ballpark, 325 to 375.
Okay.
Yeah, so if it was 3.8, if it was 3.8 million last year, if we looked at our comprehensive benefits or whatever, then it might be up about three, about 325, 375,000, somewhere in there. And I could get you an exact number if you need it.
An increase in 375,000 or?
Right, yeah.
So, and what is the total this year for salaries?
The total, I'd have to look at the comprehensive.
Wouldn't that be in here, though?
That would be.
Under the general fund?
No, that would be in our finance, that would be, that's not in, in the budget. That, that would be in the the composition that would make up the budget. So that number might be around 4 million. We could check that number for you, though, before this meeting is over. I could have one of my staff members just run upstairs and get you that number.
Okay, got it. So I guess that it wouldn't be just the line item of going to general fund, because every department has its own line item.
Right. Okay, right.
Roughly, do you know, we know it increased 375,000. Do you know what it is across?
Oh, what, you, you want to know what, not what comprises the 375. You just want to know what the difference is from last year to this year?
Yeah, like regular salaries and wages, and total, total personnel services across all general.
Yes.
The like we got the knowing that, and the reason why I'm asking, so we, we know at least it increased under 400,000 roughly. And when you originally put the budget together, you had a higher millage rate, and those raises were all in there. And then when you went to cut, you provided us with where you cut, and you did not need to cut the wages. You were saying we get to hold the wages with this?
Right.
We made these cuts, and we believe this millage rate will support taking care of our employees.
Right.
Got it. So from the the first budget of kind of back of the napkin, everything, before you really started to scrutinize and look at it, was the best for what we believe would retain and keep employees and address some of the inflation issues, right?
Yes.
And we, and I have to trust, and I do trust that staff is, to answer one of the questions I think Mayor Pro Tim asked about, are they going to other cities? I don't know. I know that Melinda and you and us, y'all are going to crunch those numbers as we get in our meeting, and you're going to figure out a competitive rate. And so the number 300,000 or 400,000 more is a number that you believe in, that, that will help address this issue.
Yes, sir. And the last couple of months of city manager meetings, this has been a topic of discussion. I meet with the city managers, and John was at the last one as well. And they're all addressing it. They meant, they have different ways of doing it. Most of them are doing a flat across the board. None of them have said they're doing the tiered approach that we're doing, where the bottom comes up faster than the top. None of them have said they're doing the tiered approach that we're doing, where the bottom comes up faster than the top. Um, so, yeah, everybody's doing it, but will, do we know what they actually are going to get? No, no better than they know what we're actually gonna get, we know where we think we're headed, we know where they, we think they're headed. We won't know until after all these budgets are adopted throughout the county, and certainly, I was talking with Melinda about that today. We're gonna wanna do a wage and salary survey within the first six months of the next year and find out where, where did we end up hitting on this? And if we need to make an adjustment, certainly bring that back to council.
That's great, okay, so. What I hope to see in this budget is that we, or at least learn. Is that we keep the raises that we believe is going to make a happy. Healthy work environment where people aren't always looking over their shoulder at the next opportunity. Cause the, the value of keeping employees and, and as Councilmember Willa said, training in the first year, you. You're probably still trying to break even to get a return, once you get them up to speed, and so, getting into that three to five-year tenure and. Everyone's not gonna be a June Clark, I guess, but getting close to that twenty years plus. Um, is very valuable to us, so, I support the raise. Or the in- the, that increase, where, where I'm questioning is, and I think the taxpayers would support that. This is happening in the private sector too, so it's not anything that's just, you know, independent to, to public. Um, civil servants and, and, and local governments, but. If we can look at ways to not, um. Increase the taxes, th- that's what I'm after, and, and the, the way to do that, so, holding. Employee increases high, I believe that we can go below the rollback rate. And still give everyone the raise they want, and if we can't do that, I don't support it. I, so, that's how serious I am about raises. Um, but I think that there's projects and there's some additional things in there that council would need to decide. We can do that next year, or can we get it done in a different way for less money? And so, we've got a few more bu- workshops ahead to, I think, work through that, but I would, my, my. One final question to staff is, if we had to go. Um, below the, the rollback rate, I think you've done the math here, that. At the rollback rate, it would be another five hundred forty-five thousand, that would, that's, that's how the rollback rate would impact. The revenue, right, we would lose a half a million dollars in revenue, and so. If we had to go through and find projects or other ways to, to cut a half a million dollars out. I would support that budget fully, um, I've never supported a budget because we've never been able to cut one dollar in this city. And I've never came after employee salaries, ever, I, I, I love our employees and I think you need to be paid for what you do. But, um, there's some projects in here that I think staff worked hard on, cause they heard about them, the strategic, we worked on them. That council might say, you know what, there's another party in the picture, that's the taxpayer, inflation's hitting them too. They would be happy to pay taxes that goes to salaries, but maybe these. Few projects we can, we can hold on until next year and s- and then reassess, so, those are my comments. Coming off of the tax in, property values have increased, I wanna just point to page number seventy-four. In the, uh, the budget book. This is a very helpful chart that's provided to us that shows every fiscal year what the millage rate was. Um, the total value of the property and how that rate, when a, a, applied to that property, impacted the city and. The rollback rate is thr- three point one seven five seven, right? And so, if we wanted to receive the same amount of revenue roughly as last year, that's where we would need to be, and. We saw a ten percent, almost nine point eight nine, bottom red line, nine point nine percent increase in property value. And if you go up and you look at any time historically, in that same column, where property values increased. You can see that we, we, we always. We, we decrease the rate. And that's because you're gonna still end up with more revenue unless you decrease it up below the rollback, but we decreased it. This year, we're taking off point four four percent, just under a half a percent. But we're on the highest increase we've seen since. You get back into the two thousand one boom, I mean, thirty-eight percent in two thousand six, so we're, we're. This is a, this is a tax increase, I don't. I wanna focus on how it impacts the budget and say, what expenditures could we cut to support coming down? Because with the property value increase of almost ten percent. We should be able to support going down. Those are, those are my comments, I mean, a ten percent increase, this is a big budget, thirty. General fund is twenty-one million, every year we increase, and at some point, I think council doesn't have to. Do a few of these projects or, or we shrink the size of them and, um, think about the residents in this community. We got sewer fee increases coming up tonight and people, property taxes, people have their homes paid for, they're living here. And they keep going up every single year, and so, that's my wish, and that's what I hope to support the budgets, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Going to rollback means, just for the general public. The same amount of tax dollars that we received last year, irrespective of the rate. If we got a hundred dollars last year, we're getting a hundred dollars this year, that's called rollback, you keep it the same. If we keep it at rollback, what we're doing is not acknowledging the impact of inflation over the last year. We're saying, it doesn't affect us, we can absorb it, and I, I, I don't, I'm saying we can't. We have to address the inflationary pressures here and compounding that is the pressures on. The wage market, the labor market out there, that's why we have to, uh, we have to acknowledge the impact of inflation with this budget. That's why rollback shouldn't even be considered an option for, for any city who's dealing with inflation. Wanted to make that point, sir.
But I think we've seen cities. Go to the rollback, I mean, it, in, right, I mean, uh, we, we saw some changes in this. Where, where you do see tax decreases lower than where we're going, I don't know if they're hitting the rollback.
Those are not with the extreme inflationary pressures that we're dealing with this year.
So, when you talk about addressing infla- inflation, are you talking about when we buy a product, it's inflated in price?
Yeah.
Or, or the lives of our employees, you need to go out and.
Yeah.
Buy food and.
Yeah, there, I sent it, I forwarded an email to council last week about the price increases for the plant, just for chemicals. That are going up astronomically just due to inflation, we have to pay more for these chemicals, we don't get a choice. We can't go to those chemical manufacturers and say, hang on, we're keeping our income at rollback, you can't inflate your prices, we don't get to say that. We only have one place to look to, and that is making an inflationary adjustment on our, on our tax millage rate. Take care of those inflationary pressures, that, that's why rollback is not even tenable for us.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I think that if you don't do a project, you don't have to buy that. So, find the, the essential, there are some projects, I think, that are on the perimeter that are not critical that we do this year. And I am in support of our, our employees getting the raises so that they can combat the, the, the cost of inflation. But you can't keep increasing spending in thinking this is gonna go away because. What about the taxpayers and their inflation and their cost of living? We're raising the cost of living by increasing taxes on the, the residents of Cape Canaveral.
We're adjusting.
And I'm being sensitive to the employees. That they walk home with, with more money than they did, that our staff believes is, is competitive. But in, but. To think that we can't come down five hundred thousand in a twenty-one million dollar budget or thirty million dollars in expenditures. I think is something that we, we need to work through, and I think we can do it.
Mayor, may I ask, John, he has a comment.
Well, you know. I've talked to all the council about what would happen if we go below this three point five five nine six number. And mayor, I know you look at this as a whole and, um, I wish. I wish it was that easy, but there's so many implications here. First of all, the cap- if you did away with some of the capital projects in the gen- and let's just talk about the general fund, because the enterprise fund has nothing to do with what we're talking about. And if you. If you wanna go after the general fund for capital projects, well, let me give you one example. Staff has worked really hard, if you look at Patriots Park Playground, a hundred thousand dollar project. Well, we're not gonna wipe out a hundred thousand dollar project because we just, we just were notified that we got a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. And wiping out these capital projects does not solve the problem. Because that's, that's where we're using our cash and if we happen to have any grants. The part for the millage and the taxes and some of the other revenues coming in, support. The operational expenditures, and you can see all those if you go to every department, plus the personnel and the benefits, okay? Now, there's certain things being missed here, there's certain things, certain critical things being missed here. And, and if I could, um, you know, from the mayor's perspective. We don't have a contingency in this budget that's comfortable enough, God forbid, something happens. I, as the finance director, do not feel comfortable with a budget that goes in with two hundred thousand dollars in contingency. I'm expecting everything then to go right during the year, well, that hasn't been going too good for us based on what's going on in the United States right now. So, things aren't going too good, the other thing that concerns me too is our renewal and replacement account. We only plan on putting a hundred twenty-four thousand in, we usually put two forty, things break. Air conditioners, roofs have to be redone, we need to purchase new cars, and you need to keep putting it in that pot. For instance, some other things, number one is I could go and look at the general fund summary of the capital projects, I look at fire rescue. Well, I could tell you right now, I wouldn't touch a penny from fire or police. Because these things are critical to us and, you know, if you start cutting corners when it comes to public safety. Uh, something bad could happen in, in, in the end, some of these other, uh, these other funds that we have here. You know, whether it be the paving fund, the mobility fund, whatever, you could say, well, you could wipe those out, well, not really. Because those things are gonna be needed during the year to fill the holes for expenditures that, that projects and stuff that really need to be done. So, you can't just carve out a bunch and say, hey, uh, employees, here, we'll give you your pay raise. It, it, it just, it, it, the numbers won't add up, and what my, I'm gonna tell you what my major concern is. Is this way of thinking is going to, if something happens, and if we keep doing this down the road. We deplete our reserves and this is what really, really scares me. Is we're gonna use our cash in the bank, something I don't think that everybody understands, we're gonna deplete our cash in the bank and we will not be able to pay bills. We will not be able to pay bills, you, you can't take, if I, if I know at the end of every year, I have one point eight million dollars sitting in the general fund. That's just as the year goes and it fluctuates, if I have to take five hundred thousand dollars out of the bank. To cover all the things that might happen, now I have one point two million, we have other obligations. I'm telling you, it's an exercise for disaster and as the finance director. I wouldn't be able to sleep at night because we are leaving everything way too vulnerable here, this is risky business. You know, to ask residents, I live in a city too, but I won't bring that up, but we live in cities, and. At some time, taxes need to go up, is this the best time? No, maybe not, but. Everybody has to, and somehow, pay their share to keep the business of the city going. If we do not, if we do not go with this millage rate and we said we're gonna just cut all these other projects out or whatever. The citizens are gonna be the ones that suffer for it, eventually, the citizens are, i- and if something goes wrong. The citizens are gonna be the ones who have a, a, a city that has nothing in the bank. And, um, we, we have to manage where we have some money in the bank and we still need to get the things done while taking care of the employees. It, it, we can't, we can't just cut and make this group of people happy because we're trying to satisfy. Th- this group of folks, you, it, the budget doesn't work that way, it just doesn't work that way. And we, we can't, cutting these, some of these projects doesn't, doesn't do anything, I mean, I could look right here and say, okay, you know that Veterans Memorial Park? Two hundred and ten K, let's not do it, but haven't we just invested money in the architectural design? We gotta be careful that the things we've already done and the things we stall don't cost us more money in the end, I mean. What, what, that, it, it's not just a slashing, slashing cut, you just can't do it. We are at a point now where there is nothing to cut, I've talked to everybody for an hour on this, there is nothing to cut. And I think, and I'm a staff member, I'm not a, I'm not a council person, but I think there's a lot of people out there. Who probably understand that, um. Maybe you have to pay a little bit more in taxes to get to where we gotta go, I mean, we're not, it, you know, this, we're trying to get the, take care of the employees. Um, this is the one year we're trying to do that, and I could tell you, when Melinda did these studies. And we could compare to other cities, we've talked to other cities in terms of what they're doing, and I'll tell you right now. The city of Cape Canaveral is going light compared to some of these other cities, okay? One city said, everybody who makes seventy-five thousand dollars or less is gonna get eleven percent pay raise. And everybody to make seventy-five thousand dollars or more, maybe that'd be somebody like me, is gonna get an eight percent. Not here in Cape Canaveral, what our HR director had to do is do a tiered approach, we took. We thought about the city as a whole instead of just the employees and did a ten eight six four, okay? And then, the city manager realized with inflation, he's gonna give everybody a two dollar pay raise. Does, is that gonna meet the needs? Maybe not, but it's gonna help, and it's not, and, and you know what, I wanna commend this staff and the city manager. And the HR director especially, because when she did her studies, she was not gouging the city. She was saying, how do we get the balance we need to not hit the taxpayer too hard and to help the employees?
Okay, let me just jump in, cause we got ten more minutes left and I know the council wants to do. Um, police and fire stay the same, don't touch that, I'm talking about these projects down here, I'm not talking about anything safety related. Uh, the citizens suffer when Patriots Park doesn't get built? Sort of, but I, I don't think a hundred thousand dollars there is going to stand in the way.
But mayor, we did get a seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
That's great.
We just got it, just before Gustavo Vigar left, he notified the city that he got the grant.
So, seventy-five thousand, that's less you had to raise taxes by, right, I mean, that's the thing, and to think that.
That's already built in.
Things, if I understand you, you, there is no cuts that can be made, there's nothing in your opinion, I respectfully disagree. But that's okay, um, and, and I think that. The, there, there's what we actually spend in the contingency each year, we spent a couple hundred thousand one year, we spent hardly anything, I think, last year. The, the contingency could come down, but when, when you said, and there's other projects. If, if we had to cut out a half a million dollars, you're saying, I can't cut out a half a million dollars in projects anywhere. There, there's no.
Not in the general fund, that's not gonna affect the five hundred thousand if you reduce the, the millage, that's not gonna make up. That five hundred thousand will not make up for the, um, for the pay increases, I mean, that would mean that. We have to take that out of the bank, we'd have to, we'd have to reduce our, if I got one, uh, one point four or five million dollars in the bank right now. With the mayor, if I do what the mayor's saying and we pass the budget on one October, then I only have a million dollars in the bank. A million dollars in the bank is not, it is, is, it, because of everything that flows. Is not sufficient to run this city. A million dollars in the bank is not, it is, is, i- i- because of everything that flows, is not sufficient to run this city. I've been doing this for ten years. I'm telling you, based on what we've found is, this is the best choice for the city, now if you want to go the three point five five nine six, I think I gave you a scenario on what the impacts will be. Um, and then council might, council might say, well, maybe we, maybe we could use ARPA money for that. But the problem with ARPA money is you can't use ARPA money for taxes, debt, and, um, really you shouldn't. You could use it for lump sum payments to employees, but you really shouldn't be using it for salaries. But I could get a better read from the state and from, um, from the auditors, but I've already been told by the auditors, you really shouldn't be funding your salaries with ARPA money.
No, I'm not sa-
Yeah.
My statement is taxes increase more than they have, this is a time to lower taxes so that the citizens were not impacting the residents of this community, and then we keep the salary strong, and if we believe that these salaries are strong, then we go, go forward. We can go through and cut projects, and that's an exercise I think that would be worth, and I might be the first one to go. I, I can't do it, but I already see a few I would be willing to shrink the size of, and so I'm gonna, between now and the next budget, go through and start, um, looking at projects I think we could either reduce or eliminate, and, and we gotta get through twelve months. And I know you painted a doom and gloom future where we're pulling from reserves and we're out of money, we don't get there, this council's not gonna get there, we're gonna check in three months, and you're gonna say, hey, it's starting to get tight, we can make adjustments, we can transfer, we can do things we need, I don't think that's gonna happen. I think that we're gonna be just okay, so.
Please remember that capital projects are non-operational, come from cash, cash forward, out of the bank. They do not affect what we're trying to do here with, um, millage, and that's on their all operational expenditures, so, anyway.
Well, I just saw that some projects, whatever the reduct, wherever it's needed to, to impact it, and monies can be transferred, it's all fluid, and I know there's some rules, but on where the money goes, that's enough for me. Um, thank you very much, uh, council, any final comments as we're wrapping up here? We don't need to vote on anything, we're just having a workshop. What's from Willis, David?
I have a comment. I have a comment today.
Yes.
Go ahead, Angela.
I feel that the, yes. The whole world is having problems. We're just getting back after a pandemic, and businesses are just starting off. Things are so expensive, has to do with supply and demand. We're pay, going to be paying more for everything. That's the way it is, so I think we have to be very realistic when we look at this, and I think that this is as low as we possibly can go, this year, this year. It's a totally different year. And I think that if you're ready for a move, move that we go and get this millage rate.
There, there's no vote tonight, Councilmember Raymond, um, just a workshop.
I thought that, excuse me, I thought that we had set the rate this month.
That, that's at six o'clock.
That'll be coming up here in five minutes.
Excuse me, I knew that we had one potato.
Yeah.
Yep, we will do that at six PM at our regular meeting. Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Callum, any final comments from you?
Oh, yeah, I just had, um, a couple things I'm looking at, uh, again, um, I would like to look at some projects, too, uh, and, and talk more about this, but if we, if we go with the, um, three point three seven results in a two hundred and thirty-three K in the general fund and a hundred K in the, um, CRA, would that be something, I mean, we could possibly live with, John, or? John?
If you, if you reduce there, the, the CRA will suffer by a hundred K, so we'll have to look at that and see what needs to be cut out of the CRA. And as far as the two hundred and thirty-three K goes, I guess I would go to council and ask if, uh, we could use ARPA money or something along those lines, because I, I don't have two hundred and thirty-three K to get this budget. Unless we completely wipe out contingency, but as a finance director, that's almost like committing a mortal sin, so I don't think I Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think I could do that, but, you know.
Mayor, I know you're, you're going around the rest of the council, well, I know we've only got about two minutes left here. Um, could we gather some consensus for a workshop meeting on Tuesday, August sixteenth at five o'clock? That would be the second workshop on this.
Yes. I agree.
Okay.
Okay, are we, uh, is that data okay with us?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll record consensus to hold a workshop on August fifteenth, August sixteenth at five o'clock, and we've got about another minute and a half left to wrap it up there.
Let's go ahead and, uh, live for another down and adjourn, because we're gonna roll right into our six PM, unless there's anything pressing, are y'all okay to adjourn the meeting? Good. Mayor Protim and Councilmember Raymond, we're gonna adjourn, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right, meeting adjourned, we'll reconvene at six.